This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
And welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting of Wednesday, May 7th. This meeting is being recorded and is being held hybrid on the order by the governor extended to 2027. I guess, oh, thank you. I remind both members of the city council and the public participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Mary Ann.
Ted Coniff.
Here.
Connie Denham.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Felicia Jansik.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
JT Terrell.
Here.
Okay, thank you. And you can either join us for the Pledge of Allegiance or take a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And it looks, it looks like we have minutes from April 2nd and April 16th. So I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Can I move?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on approval of the April 2nd and 16th minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Motion passes. And now is the opportunity for anybody from the public that would like to address the council on any matter that is not being discussed at the public hearing. So if you would like to talk about any of our CPA or the amendments to ordinances, that will be later. Anything else, please step to the podium. You have three minutes to state your name and address for the record and address the council. And is anybody online? I don't see any hands.
There's a hand.
Is there a hand?
Director Mason.
John Mason?
Where is John Mason?
Right in the middle.
Right in the middle, in the lower.
Oh, there we go. John, sorry. Go ahead.
No problem. Thank you. John Mason, Parks and Recreation. I just want to make an announcement that this year is our 100th anniversary of Daily Field, and we are going to be doing a celebration on June 21st from noon to 5:00. We're going to have live music, inflatables, games for the kids, food trucks, a commemorative baseball game, and a lot of other activities. So I just kind of want to get that on the calendar, and we're going to have more details in the upcoming weeks as we get closer to that event. But once again, we're going to be celebrating it on Daily Field on the 21st from noon to 5:00 for 100th anniversary of Daily Field.
Wow, very impressive. Thank you, John. Anybody else for public speak? Okay, all right. Seeing none, I will close public speak. And we have a little time, so we do have a request for media action, which has been on the agenda for two meetings now, so it's not that immediate. But it is a resolution in support of the Healthy Incentives Program. And I'm not sure if people are familiar with that, but it's basically anybody that receives SNAP benefits can use this as a reimbursement to buy fresh, local fruits and vegetables. So being able to use it at the farmer's market, and this was cut. And so I feel like this is an important thing for us. I was, the impetus for this was the director of the Food Bank of Western Mass had reached out to the mayor and myself. And so had asked us to join other cities in the area to support the Healthy Incentives Program. So I will read this, and then we can make a motion and discuss it. "A resolution calling for full support of the Healthy Incentives Program. Whereas in Massachusetts, the Healthy Incentives Program, HIP, automatically applies to anyone who receives SNAP Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program benefits and allows them to receive limited reimbursement when they purchase locally grown fruits and vegetables. And whereas on December 1st, 2024, the Department of Transitional Assistance, DTA, cut HIP monthly benefits by at least 50% to $20 per household per month, regardless of household size, from a variable $40 to $80 based on household size. And whereas HIP serves as a critical tool for nutritional well-being and the fight against food insecurity and hunger, which is pronounced among low-income residents of East Hampton and the Commonwealth, including children, families, seniors, and people with disabilities and chronic illness. And whereas in 2024, nearly 200,000 households in the Commonwealth and 10% of households in Hampshire County benefited from HIP through an increase in their access to healthy local farm foods, and nearly 300 Massachusetts farmers increased their income through HIP sales. And whereas HIP serves to decrease the estimated $2.4 billion in avoidable costs related to food insecurity and hunger in Massachusetts by increasing access to healthy foods. And whereas the result of this cut to HIP funding, families across Massachusetts are reporting increased food insecurity. And whereas vendors at East Hampton's farmer's market and farm stands rely on the sales that they receive with the support of programs like SNAP and HIP to sustain themselves. And since the cut to the HIP began, farmers from across Massachusetts have reported a 60% drop in HIP sales, compelling them to lay off staff and change their business plans to adjust for lowered sales. Whereas HIP participation is up 19% as compared to last year, and the need for state and local governments to support their residents' nutritional security is likely to increase if federal support dries up. And whereas the East Hampton City Council recognizes its duty to advocate on behalf of our constituents grappling with food and nutritional insecurity who rely on these critical state-funded programs, now therefore be resolved that the City of East Hampton, City Council of East Hampton calls upon Governor Moore Healy, Senate President Karen Spickla...
Spilka.
Spilka. Sorry. Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano, House Committee on Ways and Means and Support, an additional $10 million in supplemental budget to fully fund the Healthy Incentives Program to ensure food and nutritional security for the people of the Commonwealth, to allocate $25 million to fully fund HIP in the coming fiscal year's budget, and to support the passage of State Senate Bill SD 829, an act relative to an agricultural healthy incentives program to make HIP a permanent program. Be it further resolved, the clerk of the city council forward copies of this resolution to each individual and office named above, as well as East Hampton Mayor Nicole LaChapelle, State Representative Omar Gomez, and Senator John Vilas." That was in the form of a motion?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any discussion on this? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no votes? Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. And we do have some time before our public hearing starts, so does any counselor have anything that they would like to announce? And I saw Counselor Terrell first, and then Counselor Denham.
I just have a few things. First, I would like to thank everybody who came out for the citywide cleanup on Sunday, even though it was, of course, a rainy day, as we've had many of in the last two or three weeks. I just thought it was great. Thanks to Owens there at the Trash Master who headed it up and organized the whole event. Certainly benefits the city, and it's something I would like to see actually happen more than once a year, because I really think it's a great thing. Couple hours volunteering time, and it really does a lot. I would also like to thank everybody who showed up for Little League Opening Day on Saturday. We had a fantastic opening day after postponing it a week due to, of course, the weather again. So the parade went well. I want to thank the fire department, the police department for heading our parade, which the kids, I think, I think is the best part of the day is the police cars and the fire truck. So just want to thank everybody who came out for that.
Great. Thanks. Counselor Denham.
Great, thanks. The planning department, you can visit the planning department website to purchase your rain barrel. Courtesy of the Great American Rain Barrel Company, place your order by May 11th, and then you can pick it up at the East Hampton Highway Division on May 22nd. So just want people to know that. And then the other thing, actually, just since we're talking about food insecurity, this is just something that I have requested of the mayor's office to actually make residents in the community aware of cuts federally, because not only are we dealing with cuts regarding food insecurity, but also there's been large cuts to fuel assistance and other kind of assistance programs. So I've requested that the mayor's office put something on the website to actually begin to outline some of those cuts and how they're impacting the community. And so I think that people need to be aware of that. I think people were quite shocked when they saw that they had lost some of their fuel support. So, so it's just working with that office to, to make residents aware of some of the cuts that they may be experiencing, as well as making residents aware of the fact that the city is entering into challenging those legally. And so I think it's important for residents to know that the city is in fact fighting for those benefits as well. So, yeah, just want, I think people need to know that.
Okay, thank you. Any other counselors have any announcements? Okay, seeing none. We don't have any correspondence. Counselor Kuzinski, do you have anything for president or vice president?
I don't have specific communications.
I don't either, and we still have five minutes. I don't see the mayor for mayor communications. It looks like we have a memo regarding the referral for disposition of the town lodging house. And so maybe if the mayor joins us later, she can talk about that. But I think at this time, we could probably get through a couple of committee reports. And Counselor Coniff, I hate to put you on the hot seat here, but I know you're filling in for Counselor Peak for finance. Would you like to take a swing at it?
Oh, I am doing that too.
Oh. Were you not?
I thought I was just doing the public.
Oh, was it Connie doing?
We haven't talked about that. The public hearing is...
You're taking the public hearing?
Yeah.
Well, either one of you can take the report.
There's really, the only other thing is the quarterly fiscal reports from the city auditor, which we are still awaiting. And my understanding is that that is due to some reconciliation of what the auditors have already done before we can see those reports. I think that it's fair to say the finance committee is a little anxious to get those, and we've been waiting a long time, so hopefully we'll be getting those very shortly.
Great. And do you guys have a meeting set for your next meeting?
Next Wednesday?
Is it next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, sure. Let's say it's next Wednesday.
12th and 13th for budgets.
Oh, May 12th and 13th for budgets as well, next week.
Budget hearing.
Yep. And 12th, 13th for budgets, 19th and 20th? Perfect. All right. Counselor...
Do you want me to move the new business?
Yeah, actually. Yeah, let's do that.
So we have, do I have those in front of me? Do you want me to do?
I think Counselor Denham has them, so.
Oh, you want to put those?
Yeah, I'll take them. So the first one is, first reading of this is a request hereby, request is hereby made for approval of the following interdepartmental transfer. Amount requested $822.77 to be transferred from professional services, $822.77, to be transferred to, tax refund interest, $822.77. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. Payment processing for FY '24 credit card charges in the amount of $822.77. And the second item is a supplemental appropriation, but I just want to note that this is dated April 9th, 2024. So just acknowledging that, it should read this year, yes. So this is a request hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested $41,916 to be transferred from capital stabilization, $41,916 to be transferred to Mass Trails Grant Program Revenue, $41,916. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This funding will cover a shortfall between the grant funding amount, prior appropriation, friends of the rail trail donation, and the total project construction cost for the Manhattan Rail Trail Pavement Restoration and Repair Project. And both of those are in the form of a motion to move this to the finance committee.
Second to vote.
Okay, we have a second to move both of those items to the finance committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Motion passes.
Excuse me. I'd like to also set a public hearing for these two on May 21st.
Okay.
Do we need to do a motion on that?
Yes.
Okay, in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to set the public hearing for May 22nd.
21st.
21st. Sorry. 21st. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Motion passes. Thank you, Counselor Coniff. Thank you, Counselor Denham. Mayor, I see that we have you here. We have one minute. Do you have anything you'd like to say about the town lodging house before we open up our public hearing?
Just quickly, the town lodging house, as we get further and further into it, the cost really went up. We got a letter from the Mass Historical Commission that said we would have to do extensive pre-design work around the house with no guarantee that we would be able to add units. So the unit cost went over $800,000 because the project would be pulled out another four, as long as four years. So we went back to HLC Housing Livable Communities and said this is why it's not going to work out. They gave us an opportunity to reassign the money. We're in the process of that. Valley CDC said that the project wasn't feasible at this point. There is another group that is interested, and Counselor Kuzinski has been on that group email. So because it's, it should be disposed of, we sent it back to property on advice of Attorney Tanner, who said he could be available for a property committee if he wanted to walk through that process or have questions just about. But, yeah, the project just got caught up at the wrong time, the wrong place, and we did not expect Mass Historical Commission to come back with the request that they had in tying it to additional units. It was unusual for them to do it because we already had their permission to go forward with the sign.
Interesting. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So at this point, it's 6:15. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Can I move?
Second.
A lot of motions in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And we're going to start with the CPA Committee Supplemental Appropriation Request. Counselor Coniff.
Thank you. So we discussed both of these requests in our last meeting, and I don't know if Alexis is on remotely, but that's okay. She may join in a second. We can start with the other one first if she's not there.
I don't see anybody.
It's bright.
Alexis is in, this is Donna Cabana with Valley Community Development.
So she's there?
No, she is not. This is Donna Cabana with Valley Community Development.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right. So are, so are you speaking to this issue, or you're just letting us know she's not here?
She's not here, and I'm here if there's any questions regarding the project.
Got it. Thank you. So why don't we start with that? There is a, an appropriation for $201,875 to the Valley CDC Mortgage Subsidy Financial Literacy Project, and we discussed that with Alexis. She walked us through the various, where the money is going to go. There are three mortgage subsidies that they are going to be funding, $50,000 each, and then financial literacy, which talks to first-time homebuyer classes, housing counseling, and so forth. That is $51,875. And then, was there more? Did I miss the dollar amount? There might have. Is that, is that your recollection, Connie? Or am I reading the wrong thing?
No, you went off 101.
Yeah.
So there's another $1,000.
I know, and I don't have that in my notes, so I'm trying to figure it out. But actually, if the CDC would like to, go ahead and talk to what the numbers are so that we can make sure we have all of the numbers represented.
Okay, so it is $201,000, and then, and there is some funds, approximately $35,000 being rolled from the last program, from the last program that we ended on February 15th, that we'd had already been approved for in a previous round. So it is four $50,000 mortgage subsidies going directly to first-time homebuyers and then administrative costs.
And is that the 51,000? Well, no. Two, so four $50,000 mortgage subsidies would be 200,000?
Yes, and then around $36,000 in administrative education, you know, first-time homebuyer education, education for folks around, you know, financial literacy, reducing debt, improving credit, finding affordable housing if they're, if they're red-burdened, a lot of different activities. It would even include working with some homeowners who are struggling.
Okay. So I, can I speak to that?
Please.
Yeah, okay.
I'm Ava Gristle. I'm the CPA coordinator. So there's three $50,000 grant slash loans, which I'm sure Donna can explain the specifics on that. And then there's $51,875 that are, that is part of that administrative cost and financial literacy.
For a total of 201,875.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you for...
And Donna referred to some funds that are being rolled over. The CPA Committee is, is planning on retrieving those funds at the end of the fiscal year after, I imagine, this appropriation goes through, if it, if it goes through. But if they are, this is going forward as its, as its own appropriation, and then the, the rollback of the funds from a previous project would occur separately, but simultaneously.
Okay. Thank you. My apologies. I was asked last minute to attend this meeting tonight.
And I was asked last minute to represent it. So we're in the same boat, but thank you very much. I appreciate your help. Thank you, Eva. Okay. So that is that one? Do you want to, do we?
We can do that one first, and then we'll move to the next one. Does anybody have any?
Do I need to read this, or?
Well, we, we'll ask questions, and then we'll get, yeah. Any counselors have any questions on this one? Counselor Kuzinski?
Thank you. Sounds great. It looks like you said three mortgage subsidies, so three individuals or three groups of people would get a $50,000 subsidy to lower their interest rate? Is that what it would be for?
Donna, do you want to take this one?
It will reduce the cost of the housing to make it more affordable for low-moderate income households below 100% AMI, which has been extremely challenging since COVID for group, for folks below 100% AMI to purchase housing in the area and in East Hampton in particular.
So there'll be three awards.
Yes.
There's some educational component, but then there is an administrative component. I'm curious, how much is the administrative fee for making three awards of $50,000 and managing an educational program? I'm not sure how extensive, how many times you meet.
So, sure. So we intend, you know, we intend to work with around 35 to 40 households, and these households will be in various stages of the process. And they are going to need help with things like reducing debt, reducing debt, improving credit, creating, creating savings plans, working on their household budgets for affordability reasons. So, so there is a lot of staff time involved in getting a person ready to be able to purchase a home.
I understand that. That? I was just asking, like, do you have, like, classes every week for six weeks, eight weeks, 10 weeks? It's a two-hour, two-hour class?
Well, they're done through individual counseling sessions, but yes, we do have monthly classes that buyers will be required to attend, and we do, we, we do this mainly through individual sessions, one-on-one, because everyone is in a different place and has different needs.
And how much was the administrative fee for this service? You said there were administrative costs.
Are you looking for the total breakdown? So there's three $50,000 awards, and then $51,875. That is the overall financial literacy program. That's the component of this.
Okay, and there's no administrative fee for Valley CDC in this process then?
I'm not fully understanding administrative fee.
Generally, there's an overhead charge or a charge for, for administration. And I, I just was curious, what, what percentage?
We would allocate time, we would allocate time, you know, that time spent on the program with East Hampton residents, and we would bill orderly.
So time for service. Okay. Good. All right, so it's a variable.
Yeah.
It's not all $51,000 necessary. Is that correct?
Right.
Thank you.
Correct.
That's great. Sounds good.
Okay. Looks like Counselor Riley has a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's actually, it's more of a comment. So first, I just wanted to say hello to you, Donna. I don't know if you recall, but some years ago, Counselor Denham and I were on the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership when we actually went through a previous round of supporting this literacy program. So it was well before some of us were even on city council, but it's, it's possible y'all don't remember because it was so many years ago, but this is, we have done this multiple times before.
Yes.
It's a very successful program. One of the primary reasons why I started to get involved with the city was through this advocacy at city council meetings, back when we were all still on Zoom. So I just wanted to put my support behind this. These types of programs have demonstrated track records of supporting people who are below 100% area median income, not just in East Hampton, but across the region, even in New England. You know, when I used to live in Vermont, it was a very standard practice for organizations like Valley CDC to offer financial literacy programs. I just wanted to say I'm in full support of this and that it's been a long time coming as a public servant, starting advocating for something like this and to see it come back. So I'm, I'm very happy, Donna, that you're putting this forward, and I intend to vote yes on it.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Denham?
You know, purchasing a house is not, it's not an easy process. There's a lot of unknowns, and so my partner and I went through a first-time homebuyer class because we didn't know, you know, I'd never purchased a house before, and so programs like these are, are really crucial for residents. And I think that there's just a lot of laws and rules and, you know, all sorts of things. And when you add in kind of the financial, financial literacy piece of that, I think it becomes even more complicated, and there's just a lot of things to pay attention to. So I really appreciate that there are programs out there. I think this is a, a great benefit to our residents, particularly given the fact that we live in an economically diverse community. You know, I'm going to support this, you know, in support of residents and families who are looking, looking to own a home. So I appreciate the work you all are doing, and thank you to Ava for the work.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Anybody from the public that would like to comment on this? Okay. Seeing none? Counselor Coniff, now you can read the motion.
I'm a little rusty. Can you tell?
Hey, it's fine.
In the form of a motion, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested $201,875. To be appropriated from CPA reserved for affordable housing, $200,913, and CPA undesignated fund, $962, to be appropriated to the Valley CDC Mortgage Subsidy Financial Literacy account. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose. Provides low to moderate income households with financial literacy education, housing counseling service, services, and three down payment assistance grants.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counselor Kuzinski?
I just wanted to say that it is a very complicated process, as Counselor Denham had said, to purchase a home. It is express, especially daunting for those who haven't had a lot of experience in the business world and are moving up and making their first purchase. I am entirely supportive and glad to see that we have a homebuyer program support. So this is great.
Sounds good. Any other thoughts? I would just say that I wish we could do more, because I think a lot of people could really use this, and with the price of housing, it's almost a necessity. So I appreciate this. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any no's or abstention? Motion passes. And that brings us to the second.
Okay.
Counselor Coniff.
Second one is for $69,382 to Lathrop Community for Invasive Plant Removal. And I'm going to ask Barbara Wolford to come up and explain the project, where they are in the project, and what these funds will be used for.
Thank you. I am Barbara Wolford.
I am a resident of east of the Northampton campus. I used to be a resident of the East Hampton campus of the Lathrop community. Joining me is our CEO, Patrick Arguin, CEO of both campuses. It's all one. And we have come before the CPC before to ask for a fun, a funding of three, a three-year A collaborative came, Lathrop, the Kestrel Land Trust and the two cities, East Hampton and Northampton, because our two campuses are on both cities. And we asked for this grant in order to remove invasive plants from 110 acres of land that Lathrop owns, including some landscaped acres, but mostly acres, 103 acres that are in conservation restriction, permanent. And essentially, our grant is about birds. Out there now are lots and lots and lots of birds, building their nests and trying to raise their young. An example, which applies to almost all terrestrial birds, is that a pair of birds to raise one nest full of young needs up to 6,000 insects. Pollen and nectar alone won't do it. They need protein and fat. And most of those insects are caterpillars. That is the larvae of butterflies and moths and other insects. A larva is a nice fat plump of protein and fat that you can easily stuff into a little maw. Perfect. Nature's perfect response. Most caterpillars, 90%, can only eat one or two species of plants, almost entirely native When plants come in from alien lands, they may become invasive because they have left behind their enemies and their competitors in their native Asia or Europe or wherever. And they can run amok as we see all around us in East Hampton. And what we're trying to do at Lathrop with our 103 acres, which are connected to other conserved land in the Park Hill area, so that long swatches of land can be preserved. What we're trying to do is to create a safe place for birds, for pollinators and for all of the creatures that depend on them. That's what this grant is about. It's not just about removing bad plants. It's not just about landscaping the outdoors. It's really about preserving the wildlife upon which we and all the creatures that inhabit this land depend. So what we intend in this three-year project is to hire contractors and use our own resident volunteers to remove invasive plants from the 103 acres of CR land that's total, north and east. But 78 of those acres are East Hampton acres and the CR is held by the Kestrel Land Trust, which means they police that we didn't put a golf course on it or more buildings. So that is the main thrust of this grant. And then there are two other parts. One part is that within the landscaped area, we are removing invasive shrubs and replacing them with natives. Because if you have a invasive shrub on your lawn, guess what? It moves into the woods. It's all one ecosystem. And another part is public education. So we hold one public program per year about our work. And in addition to that, we maintain a website and we publicize internally with, with signs on our land about our work. So that's the project. The project came before the CPC in 2023 and they granted us the first third, $33,000. And we were going to use it in fall of 2024. But because of staffing difficulties in East Hampton, the, the paperwork was never completed and we simply couldn't get the machinery in place in time for the contractor to do this work in the fall. So that money is still sitting there. We have plans for it. We have a contractor all lined up and we did everything that the grant promised in 2024. We did everything that the grant promised, except the 78 acres for which the East Hampton money was to be spent. So we did the public program and we did the land, we did the invasives removal that the Lathrop itself paid for, including $27,000 donated by Lathrop residents, as well as in-kind services from Lathrop management. And we did all the Northampton work because, I hate to say this, but the city of Northampton gave us the whole shot, all three years, right from the beginning. So we did their part of the year one work. So what we're asking for now is the full hunk to complete the three years of funding, $69,000 and something. And we will combine that with the $33,000, which was awarded, but still not spent. And we will be able then to apportion these funds over the coming three years in a way that makes most sense for the work to be done. Because when you are removing invasive plants, year one is usually the most cost and labor intensive, because you're getting out all the, all the big ones and all the swoop of them. And then after that, you come back and you get the ones that re-sprouted or the came up again. So this apportionment, if you give us the full money now for all three years, we will be able to make much more efficient use of the total sum of money. We will, of course, report back to you. We began this project with a thorough, professional assessment of our land in which Land Stewardship Inc. sent its people to walk our land foot by foot, literally, and map out every area where the invasives were, which invasives there were, how dense they were on a scale. They mapped it all out. That's our starting point. And that was the basis for our plan for this three-year project, to bring our land up to a much higher level of consistent control of invasive plants. If a land, this is the science, a land that it has, it is dominated by invasive plants may lose up to 75% of its wildlife. And we're not going to let that happen to our Lathrop land. Any questions?
So thank you so much for that very thorough explanation. And I'm sorry that we weren't able to make that happen last time. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can make it happen this time. And I would open it up to any councilors that have any questions. Yep, go ahead. Counselor Riley?
So I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for your remarks. It is very rare when people come before us to make presentations, that they are able to tell the story of a policy in the way that you've just told it to us. And that also sometimes when people give presentations to us, sometimes the language is lost for the public, right? We have a general understanding. We get materials beforehand. We can, we can follow along with what people are typically presenting. But the way that you're able to do that tonight, I think really explains to the public exactly what this money is meant to do in a way that everybody understands. And I, I just, I think that's a very rare skill set to have. And I just wanted to say thank you for doing that and, and to the Lathrop community, I mean, this is a fantastic asset to have at your disposal. I have no questions. I'm, I'm 100% in support of this. Other than I, maybe if I could put a pitch, I don't know if you've considered this specifically, but East Hampton in general has a very large problem with black swallowwort. Is that, have you been finding ways to actively deal with that? Have you been successful? Because I, I mean, I go into my garden year after year to constantly pluck these things before they actually can seed and spread. And to me, it feels like an impossibly long process. I don't know if you've had any success with that, that you would be able to share anecdotally?
We do have black swallowwort, just starting. Our, our contractor found it in one of our fields. But that's part of a larger problem, which is that the nature of invasive plants is that they're very persistent and they have left behind their competitors and enemies. And they have often very extensive root systems. So they come back and they come back and they come back. However, at Lathrop, we have been at the business of controlling our invasive plants for more than 10 years. And we have records and we have photographs. So we know that when you can stay on top of invasives removal year after year after year, as they come back and come back, if you can stay on top of it, and the motto is early, uh, early finding and rapid action, early detection, rapid action. And so that's what we're trying to get. This study by the contractor showed that our control of invasives is near 100% on some of our acres. But it's between 25 and 50% on some of our acres. And so one of the goals here is to bring the whole thing up to, if we can reach it, 90% control of invasives. And then you have to keep at it, but it's much easier to get the little, the little re-sprouts. And I do sympathize with your black swallowwort efforts. Go.
Okay. So Counselor Denham and then Counselor Smith and then Counselor Krasinski?
First thing I want to do is I want to thank you and your community for your commitment to the land.
Thank you. We have a number of Lathrop residents online, as you see.
Yeah.
We have a large committee of more than 30 residents and we work very closely with our management, who is, and board, who are totally online with this.
Yeah. I appreciate your, your commitment. I asked you this in the meeting, but I'm wondering if you could just share again, what is the, what opportunities do, do East Hampton residents have for accessing the land on, at the Lathrop campus?
Yes. At the trailhead is a sign that says, visitors welcome. Dawn to dusk, no vehicles beyond this point. And we do have residents who take advantage of our trails. That said, this is not a public trail system. Because we maintain it ourselves, resident volunteers do much of the work of trail maintenance. So we are out there, 70-year-olds, 80-year-olds, trimming branches off the trails. They are, they are just dirt trails. And so they're not equipped to handle the kind of traffic that you would expect on a publicly maintained, public trail system. So the, the basic good to the community of this project is not to provide a place where you would take your kids for a walk on Sunday. It is to provide a refuge for wildlife, so that there are birds and there are butterflies for your kids to see and enjoy.
Yeah. And then the, the next point that I wanted to make, I think that the work that you're doing around kind of eradicating invasive species, you know, the bees committee of East Hampton that I, Ava put you in touch with.
Yes.
You know, I hope that there is some real opportunity for partnership there.
We have been in touch. Thank you for putting me onto that. Absolutely. That, that's a fabulous thing that the city has done now to set up this, this committee.
Yeah. So I'm very excited. I think there's some real opportunity for the city and the Lathrop community to actually work together. And I think there's some real great opportunities.
Absolutely. We will be collaborating.
Thank you. And I believe I said Counselor Smith?
Okay. I had a few, few questions, a few comments. The first one, I just wanted to say for the residents who have put their personal funding to this, I just think that's a really thoughtful legacy gift that you're all leaving to East Hampton that will be here for a very long time. And I just recognize the significance of that. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and I appreciate Lathrop community also matching those funds. The second thing that I was going to say is that I would love to see pictures from the invasive plants that you took that was going to be taken care of last year, but had to wait a year. I would love to see how much further that has come this year, just so we can have a better story to be able to tell. Because I think, for example, with what you were just talking about, the black swallowwort, like that can take off really.
Fast.
Yeah. And so I, I would love to be able to just document that with the, with the photo footage, just to be able to show how invasive it is and to explain that.
Yeah. We have some photos from last year or from the time when Land Stewardship Inc. did our analysis. And what we could do would be to take photos now this year before the work for this year starts and see what kinds of progress the invasives have made. Oh, you're delayed? Oh.
Yeah, exactly. And the other thing I was going to mention before Counselor Denham had said anything about the bees committee, was that this past winter, we did a native pollinator winter sowing workshop with the bees committee. And we had 40 people come to it. It was held in bouquets in the valley downtown. And so if there's ever a date where we could have a community seed harvesting day, where we could start to build up the library of native pollinator seeds, I think there would be a lot of movement around that idea.
Yes. Yes. Our fall program last year, which Kestrel Land Trust and Lathrop collaborated to bring, was a guy who is a professor of environmental scientists, science at Ohio State University, Peter Curtis, who talked to us about the Lathrop work on invasives in the context of invasive work and basically restoration of native habitat in the valley as a whole. It was fascinating, fascinated program. We had both residents and members of the community there. Thank you.
Counselor Krasinski?
I'd like to just tell you how grateful I am for your presentation and the level of detail and the ability for, I'm going to say for me to understand, because I'm sure there are others who aren't experts in the, in the field that you're talking about. And yet we as citizens can begin to appreciate the work you're doing. So I'm very grateful for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I wanted to say that I'm also glad to hear about the trailhead, visitors welcome. I know you're not looking for a ton of visitors and the intensive use, but that you're open to the public's viewing. You mentioned the number of birds that are out there at this time of year, the hungry birds, where we're stopping our feeding for the winter season. And I, we counted at our house 36 different types of species of birds. I am sure, and that's in a residential, in a residential neighborhood, you have the opportunity to help wildlife and birds unbelievably. So thank you so much. You helped to make that clear to us. I would hope that your presentation, you might be able to consider a presentation to us in five or 10 minutes, seven minutes next year perhaps, showing us the progress you've made to achieve your goals.
Yes.
And of, of this specific project.
Yes.
I would, I would welcome that for this council to hear. So I hope you might consider that.
Absolutely. Part of the commitment that we made in, in the grant was to, was for a regular schedule of reports by, by Lathrop. To the CPC, we would also be happy to do it to the council.
Thank you so much.
Any other councilors? Counselor Jatsik?
Thank you, Barbara, and thank you, Lathrop. Again, it is sad to hear that it was a paperwork staff who that held up our part of this, this project, which is unfortunate, but I am confident we'll be able to move forward. I just wanted to mention really quickly that I personally have been in touch with several members of the bees committee, as well as just East Hampton residents who are interested in starting a more grassroots campaign to combat invasives in just our neighborhoods and backyards, to your point, Counselor Riley. And so I'd just like to mention that because I do think that the work that Lathrop is doing is commendable and it can't just be one area, because as you mentioned, these things spread very quickly. And I'm sure all of us can see that in our backyards. And you mentioned black swallowwort, Counselor Riley, and one of the major issues, as some of us may know, is that it's so similar to milkweed, but it will really have a very detrimental effect on the monarch butterfly. detrimental effect on the monarch butterfly caterpillars. And I can speak from personal experience that not on, in my own backyard, but immediately behind me on city property, there is what I like to call oceans of black swallowwort every summer that I personally try to go out and, and handpick. And so just wanted to put that out there because I think that there can really be both the work that you all are doing at Lathrop and more grassroots communal work as well. And I think each of us here listening can do our part to pluck what we see. And if we don't know what it looks like, we can also do our part to educate ourselves. And hopefully there's resources that you mentioned as well to understand what garlic mustard looks like, or what black swallowwort looks like as well. So just wanted to mention that also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Anybody from the public like to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, Counselor Coniff.
Okay. I wanted to just mention that the CPA unanimously approved this request, as did the finance committee. In the form of a motion, the request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested $69,382 to be appropriated from CPA reserved for open space $1,948. CPA undesignated funds $67,434 to be, for a total of $69,382,000 to be appropriated to Lathrop years two and three invasive removal $69,382. The amounts requested will be used for the following purpose. The funding would be used to control invasive vegetation on Lathrop community land and educate the public about invasive species.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from counselors? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any no's or abstention? Motion passes. Thank you, Counselor Coniff. Thank you. And so the next thing we have is a city ordinance amendment to traffic rules and orders, and also an adoption to MGL. So I'll pass that over to Counselor Terrell.
Yes. This is something we've discussed at our public safety meetings last few, and also was in front of the council once before to adopt a 25 mile an hour citywide speed limit. I'm gonna defer to Counselor Derby, who was on the public safety committee when this first came up. He has a little more knowledge of the history, so.
Thank you, Counselor Terrell. And I do, and I wanted to start the interactive portion of this program tonight. So I'm, the way I'm gonna do that is I'm gonna ask two questions. So question number one is, does anybody know what the citywide speed limit in Holyoke is? It's 25.
That's correct.
Yeah. Now, hold on, hold on, hold on. Who knows what the citywide speed limit in East Hampton is?
30.
Okay. And if you ask that question to nine out of 10 people in the city, or you ask it to 10 people, nine out of those 10 will not know that we already have a minimum, or, you know, a speed limit. Not minimum, but it's citywide speed limit. And the, the correct answer is 30, but it's not posted anywhere. So if you're driving through a very, if you're driving through a very congested neighborhood and the speed limit is not posted, most people don't know what the speed limit is on that street. And I think that's a really important point as we discuss this. Because everybody knows that the citywide speed limit in Holyoke's 25, because those signs are posted at the gateways. And we've all seen them 100 times, and we all know that Holyoke's citywide speed limit is 25. But most people don't know that East Hampton already has a citywide speed limit. It just happens to be 30. And so what this is, and I would say, you know, really, I'll backtrack and I'll, I'll pull the, the historical card here, which is I've been on public safety for many a decade. And one of the constants in public safety is traffic speeding and pedestrian safety. It's just one of the things that we deal with. And I would say since COVID, we've dealt with this significantly more. And I say if we look at the historical, just within the last year and a half of, of, you know, pedestrian versus car accidents in the city, you know, this is not painting a pretty picture for us. And the more awareness that we can create about speed and about speed limits and about safe driving and about pedestrian safety in East Hampton, the more beneficial, just in, like on its face, things will be because there will be a broader awareness. And if we have signs at the main entrances to the city of East Hampton that say that there is a citywide speed limit, there is no excuse for people to be going 40 miles an hour in a thickly settled area. But as of today, going 40 miles an hour in a thickly settled area is an acceptable thing. And the reason I say that, not because you're not breaking the law, but because many people find that if they travel within the 10-mile buffer of the speed limit, that they will be safe. And I would say that might be correct in some respects, depending on the situation. However, it's not safe for the people in that neighborhood. And, and so, you know, as someone who's been dealing with these issues for many years, I think that it's, us doing our due diligence is important here. And I think our due diligence here is to help people understand that speeding in thickly settled areas is dangerous and that we care about that. That this council cares, that the city cares, that we care about the people that have lost their lives in traffic accidents, and that we're gonna stand up and do something about that. And, you know, and I apologize, because the last time this came in front of the council, I know we were short-staffed, I wasn't here. And, and so we got sent back to committee, which is fine, because we were able to refine, you know, what we understood about this topic. And, you know, so as we bring this forward, I think, you know, really, what this is, is this is our, us doing our due diligence and, and fulfilling our responsibility to our constituents who are coming to us on a weekly basis, bi-weekly basis, coming to every single public safety meeting and complaining about traffic in the city. I don't think there's been one public safety committee meeting that we've, I've been to in the last, you know, year where we haven't had a community member come in and express their concern. And so, you know, basically what this is, it's relatively simple. This would be us adapting an MGL that would create a citywide, it would change the citywide speed limit from 30 to 25, unless otherwise posted. So if a street is already posted, because a lot of people are like, well, I, you know, 25 is too slow to go down, you know, North Hampton Street. And, well, that's correct. Streets are posted as, as we sit here. And those, those speed limits would not be affected by this. It would only be in thickly settled areas that are currently not posted. And so I think that is really the, the important piece to understand about this. It doesn't impact any other roads that are already posted. So if we adopt this MGL, then we would add two definitions, which would be thickly settled and it would be, you know, business district or, let me get it right, so I don't say the wrong thing. Thickly, so business district, yep, so, and that would basically add that to our traffic rules and order definitions. And then we would add this to the 25 mile an hour citywide speed limit to our traffic rules and orders. So there's three things that would happen here. And, you know, some people would maybe balk at the potential cost to the city, because the city is responsible for putting up gateway signs. Now, there is nothing that says that we have to put these signs at every point the city crosses into Southampton, Holyoke, North Hampton. We don't. The, the main thoroughfares, and as we sat in committee, we identified five different spots. And we asked Greg Nudelman, our DPW director, how much he felt like that would cost the city. And so what he felt comfortable putting forward was it would cost in total about $1,500. So as I, as I think about this, I think the raising of awareness, the, the solidifying of our commitment towards pedestrian safety and traffic safety, $1,500 seems like a small price to pay. And I know that at the last meeting, some people were concerned that if you were driving 25 miles an hour in a thickly settled area, that someone might road rage on you. Well, I will say, there's nothing we can do to stop people from speeding. There really isn't. But we can raise awareness. And we are not gonna be able to get someone who is a road rager to stop road raging. And they're probably gonna find a reason to road rage, whether you're going 25 or 30. And if they're following you and beeping their horn and being aggressive, I have, I asked this question to our, our about-to-be new police chief, and he assured me that if we called in to the East Hampton Police, if someone was driving like that on your tail and doing that to you, that they would respond to that and that they would take it very seriously. So I just want to make sure that that piece, people don't feel like they would have to be intimidated for following the rules. Our police would support us in that. And so I'd be happy to take any questions. I would be happy to see if I could hopefully answer it for you. Counselor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have a question. If streets have postings of 30 miles an hour, but they have a problem with speeding.
Yes.
Can they request petition to have the sign taken down so it becomes 25 miles an hour?
So it would be, so yes, that would be a two-part process. So the first part would be to amend traffic rules and order, to adjust the speed limit of that section if it's within there. And then the second part, and, and sometimes, you know, one of the things, if it's not a state road, then we have the purview to change the speed limits. And so, and then, once that was changed, then we could have the DPW remove the sign, and then it would be 25. And you could also potentially request, if they have any, a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign, so it would be posted, so people would know as well if it was a real problem area. Because we do have areas in the city that are posted 25. And so those would not change at all either.
And, and the reason why I ask is Bryan Avenue, it's the same road as the high school.
Yep.
And it took forever to get a 30 mile an hour post there, but.
People go 40.
People go, people go faster than that.
Yeah.
And so if 30's not doing the trick, right, like maybe a 20, I mean, I don't know that it's gonna help, but 30, it just encourages 35, 40, 45, 55, right, at times. And so, you know, I, I know that there's a lot of kids on that street now, and, in full disclosure, I live on that street, right? And I'm often like telling people to like, slow down. But I know that there are, and Taft Avenue, you know, et cetera. And so I know that, I think people would be interested in seeing that come down.
Absolutely. And there is a process for that, and I, I would encourage you to bring that forward. And, and I was, I'm remiss that I didn't have Counselor Riley or Counselor Terrell chime in if you had anything to add.
No, honestly, I, I think anything that I would have said, you, you essentially covered. Just that I would say this is not something that is brand new. More than 30% of all communities in Massachusetts have opted into the 25 mile an hour citywide speed limit with very little issues to report. I think that the primary issue that people had was just the money for the signs, which is really, it's not, I say, you know, $1,500 to potentially save somebody's life, even if it's just a one-time, ever. I would be more than happy if the city spent $1,500 and it saved my spouse's life from being killed by a car. You know what I mean? So I, and I, I think even if we just did it the one time, we only saved one life, that's worth the $1,500. So yeah, I'm, I'm in full support of this.
Thank you. And Counselor Terrell?
I just want to say to co-tell Counselor Riley, $1,500 is, is not a lot, you know, and, and to be a devil's advocate, people in the inside might say, well, you know, what's it gonna do? People who are gonna speed are gonna speed. But with implementation and proper education and awareness, these signs could make people think. You know, so $1,500 worth of signs at five different entries to the city, somebody sees that, it's gonna make them think. They might not stop what they're doing or keep them from doing what they might do anyway, but it's gonna make them think. And I think that's a step in the right direction. I think it's, it's our responsibility to do that.
Absolutely. Counselor Jazek?
I'm curious about beyond the $1,500 cost for the gateway signs at the five different locations, what's the plan for additional education? Because I think that for a big change like this, we're not gonna want to rely on simply having signage up. And to your point, Counselor Terrell, people who are gonna speed are gonna speed. However, I didn't know that our citywide limit was 30 miles per hour, and I've been living here for four years. Now, I know that's not as long as a lot of other folks here, but still, four years is four years. I didn't know that till just now. So I'm curious about the education plan, and I'm also curious about if there is a plan to coordinate with the police department around stationing cruisers to monitor at these, perhaps these five different locations or other key spots in a certain period of time after those signs get installed, if, if that isn't, it works or not.
If, I can answer that really quickly, and then I'll get to Counselor Coniff. So as far as education goes, you know, we're, the council is not a, other than what we can state and we can use social media, you know, we're not a great educational conduit. But what is a really good educational conduit is, I was just talking to our almost-chief, and, you know, I think this is a great opportunity to give the East Hampton Police a little bit of leeway in, when they're doing traffic patrols, to be able to stop somebody who might be going 35, and not necessarily give them a ticket, but let them know, hey, you know, school just got out, this is a pretty thickly settled area, did you know the speed limit's 25 in this area even though it's not posted? And I think that was, that's one of the ways that East Hampton Police Department wants to kind of transition into this, is not being punitive, but being kind of educational in their approach. Obviously, there's gonna be some, you know, if, if someone's doing something egregious, they're gonna get a ticket. But that's not the point. I don't think that they're trying to, you know, you know, slap people across the wrist saying, oh, you're going two, two miles over the speed limit, now we can get you. That's not the point. I think they wanna help people understand in these areas, there is a safe speed and, you know, those stops could be a really educational way, because once you get stopped and you, and a police officer tells you, hey, you were going too fast, you might tell some other people, oh, man, I just got pulled over and this, like, you know, and that word, word spreads quickly, and, and it probably is gonna make it on social media. And so, you know, I think that that piece is important. Now, to the second part of your question is, are they gonna put patrols? So I know that there's, you know, we're trying to add a full-time patrol position. And so I think once that happens, there's going to be a dedicated officer to do enforcement around the city. I don't think it would happen near where the gateway signs are, because generally, those gateway signs are signs, are places where traffic's moving pretty quick. So we would probably be in neighborhoods like Bryan, that are, you know, close to schools and, and are potentially an issue. I know, you know.
On the street.
But it's, yeah, right. And it's gonna be, you know, streets that aren't necessarily posted, I think would be the places that they would be trying to help people understand this new piece. I know you had a follow-up, so I'll.
Oh, no, that was it. I just wanted to make sure we had appropriate staffing in place, because I know that's been an issue in the past.
Correct, correct. And Counselor Coniff, I think you were next.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President. I completely agree with Counselor Jazek. That was actually a concern of mine as well, the education of the change. And spoiler alert, I only knew those two miles per hour for those two places because of then Lieutenant, now Chief-elect Alexander. And when I was coming to the city council, that was one of the issues I wanted to get up to speed on, and I met with Dennis Scribner and the Alexander brothers, and we kind of walked through all of this. And then Assistant Chief-in-Chief-in-waiting, I don't know what we would call Dennis, but he, he mentioned there are gateway signs. And I went, what are you talking about? And he brought up a picture of the one in Holyoke. I said, my entire life, I've never seen that. I don't know where it is. I don't know what it says. I've never seen it. So I agree that it's great that we're putting them up, but we need to have a little fanfare around that.
Sure.
Because I, I've been here 13 years, never saw that sign, and I'm sure I've passed it 10,000 times. So we need to really make sure that this is out there and that people are aware. You know, and I think over time, it'll probably work its way out, but yeah, I mean, I, that's my only concern, that it may just, we may go through this grand operation, and then the signs go up and nothing changes, because people are like, what? I didn't know there was a new sign. So let's try to focus on that in some way, even if it's not a council thing, we can certainly encourage it. And I like the idea of having the people on patrol just mentioning it without ticketing. I think we need to keep the tickets maybe down and the education up.
Exactly. Any other counselors? Counselor Krasinski?
I was wondering specifically, what was the opinion of the ex, the, the law enforcement experts, the police, on this subject? What were their recommendations? What, did they refer to any particular studies? I don't know if anyone here. Uh, I don't know if anyone here is prepared to speak to the subject tonight, but, uh, i- i- if not, perhaps you could let us know what you found out.
I mean, at the meeting, uh, the two officers that were in attendance were supportive of the idea. Um, you know, that we didn't, uh, reference any research. I don't know if any research exists. I think, um, uh, you know, at the end of the day, you know, one of the, like, we can do this, and I think Council Coniff is right, we can do this, but it's not necessarily going to stop everybody from driving over twenty-five miles an hour in these areas. Um, I think really what this is about is, is about, um, making a statement and, and putting a policy in place that's gonna give the police flexibility to be able to pull people over if they need to, because this lowers the threshold by five miles an hour, which then gives them more flexibility to pull people over. Um, and I think that part is very important, because if they are able to pull people over, um, then they can be educated about the fact that, why is it dangerous to speed in this thickly settled area with kids running around and, you know, people walking home from school and riding bikes and all the things that happen? Um, so, and, and I, that's a great segue for me to say that, um, the Public Safety Committee did vote to support this three to zero.
Is there any component that, any consideration given to the, uh, 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 data study or an assessment of the data and what we would look for to see if this is having the impact that we think it will have? The guy, I'm wondering if they have an, an average speed of tickets. Listen, when it, when we stop someone, this is the average amount, and the speed is thirty-eight mile, or five miles over, ten miles over, fifteen miles over, and we had seven hundred cases of, uh, uh, of those violations. Is there something that we could point to and say, you know, geez, the average went down, you know? It looks like maybe folks are driving five miles an hour less than they had been before. They're still speeding, but it's five miles, great. I'd say, that this sounds terrific. Is there some sort of study component?
Yeah, um, so that's a really good question. Um, and, and I should say, the short answer is, that information doesn't exist yet. So here's why. So for the amount of time between when communities were allowed to opt into this, also sort of unneatly and chaotically overlaps with the pandemic. So when you do a lot of studies, particularly over the last five years, you have to take into consideration that data that you're getting may not actually be accurate or representative of, of what is really going on, because the pandemic disrupted so much stuff that you can't actually point to that as saying, this is valid data. Um, so with that being said, I have spoken to other, um, city councilors in different communities in Western Massachusetts. They are starting to measure this, but there isn't anything to concretely put out yet. It's been too soon, you know what I mean? It's, this is, I think if we go three years into the future, then we can look back at, you know, the last three to four years and say, has this actually been, uh, measured to be successful? That being said, anecdotally, nobody, uh, this hasn't been an issue for any of the communities that I've talked to. There hasn't been any outcries, there haven't been increases in road rage that anybody's noticed. It doesn't seem to have changed anything, including the amount of ticketing hasn't increased as well. So, you know, I say that with a few caveats, that anecdotally isn't scientific research, um, but that we still need time as a state to be able to collect that data and to be able to say definitively what it actually is or isn't doing. So that's the kind of research, uh, perspective, that the pandemic sort of muddied everybody's research over the last, you know, five years or so. So that, that's really kind of where we're at.
I'm hoping prospectively for East Hampton, we can have a project that will identify in a year, in two years' hence.
Yes.
I'm looking over there at our, uh, Lieutenant Alexander, uh, who is the expert in pulling data, I think, in, in our community.
Yeah, and.
And, uh, we, 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 we really put our thinking caps on to make that happen, because I, I, I would like to truly see the impact that this has.
Yeah, and I can just say to you as well.
Otherwise, if it's only gonna create more lawbreakers, I'm not sure that this is the way we wanna proceed.
Right, right, understood.
And we should take a little bit of pause on that, because we don't wanna condition people to be breaking the law more often.
Yep.
But rather obeying and respecting the driving.
So just the last thought, if I could, yeah, thank you. Um, just to say that in my experience over the last four years, um, whenever the Public Safety Committee has asked for data to be tracked or to, to be reported out, um, both the police department and the fire department do an exceptional job at relaying that information. We, we need to get back on a regular, um, cycle of having departments come in and, you know, sort of give like either quarterly or, um, semi-annual updates. The last, you know, so many months with changes on the council has sort of disrupted that process. Um, but, you know, we regularly hear from, uh, DPW, the fire department, and the police department, and it's honestly incredible, when you ask for data, what they can produce for you. So I, I would say a hundred percent, we can ask that this type of stuff get tracked. And we can also look at what other communities are, are tracking, to find out what are the metrics that actually make the most sense, and what do we wanna know? Then all we need to do is just make sure that when data is reported from traffic violations or traffic stops or whatever, that it's disaggregated enough that we can actually point to something and say, we know that this is working because X, or the things that we were worried about, here's the trends. Um, it just, it takes a little time, um, but it's a hundred percent doable.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm all supportive of data, and I look forward to working with the new chief, whoever that's going to be, in regards to, um, you know, addressing this issue within the city. Um, I think in terms of also data, we do have a, we do have a speed problem in the city. And when we have residents who say, uh, I don't have a problem with the potholes because it makes people drive slower, I think that's a, that's a telling kind of issue that we have, right? Um, and I also, so, you know, I, I, I just think that we have to be proactive, and we have to start somewhere, and this feels like a very logical place to start, particularly when we have, uh, departments who are gonna be supportive of that and being able to provide us that information. And, um, you know, educating the community, right, I think that's certainly very important. And the other thing that I think is really important to acknowledge is the work of Marvin. Um, I think that he has been very persistent in coming to this body and asking for this to be addressed for, I think, a year now, to be honest, if not more, to, to.
No, no, not quite.
But not quite, but.
Well, I've been thinking about it because I walk all the time.
Yeah, absolutely. You see it every day, right? And I think that's more data, right, that, that we see those, um, that we see those issues. Or we have people who have been here and said that they walk out into the middle of the street telling people to slow, you know, that's, that's our residents taking their life into their, lives into their hands to like, tell people to like, be safe, right? And, and we have a responsibility to, to not put people in that situation and, and, and for them to have trust in this body to, to create s- solutions, uh, that are gonna keep them safe, but also keep other people on the road safe. So I support this, but, you know, a, a, a big reason for supporting this, really, in, in many ways, is, um, Marvin, your commitment to this issue and your persistence to this, to this body.
And, um, if no other councilors have any, I'll open it up to the public.
Do you have something to say, Marvin?
Well, thank you, sure.
So come on up to the podium and, yeah, that way everybody can hear you. Just remember to state your name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm Marvin Ward, I live across the street from here in, uh, the fourth college, uh, fourth, po- four, four-one-three apartment in, you go, City Hall. The city, uh, I'm sorry, they call it, uh, College Square. That was what the people put it on, and I, I read there, and I watch it every day. I, I live on the front, so I see what goes on, on the street all the time. And there is a strength, a part of, right up here in, uh, County Cottage Street at the other end, there's a twenty-five street, it's a, it's a street sign, but people don't pay attention to it. So I've seen people going what I would judge as being forty-five or fifty miles an hour right down here, and I've talked with him about the, 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 have putting a splee, uh, a, a speed, uh, table. To, to, that's the only way it's gonna stop down. I watch every day, because I live right where it is, and I see them come down, and then they spit up, and then they head to, and wills to. That's nonsense. What are you gaining? What are you gaining? Okay, well, anyway, thank you for considering me, what I, what I feel about. I walked, I, my father died before I was six, and no one in my car, my family had a driver's license, until I got mine when I was sixteen, at the end of my senior year at high school. I didn't have a car then, but that's what I got, that's, nobody had a license even. So I walked all the time, and so did everyone else. Well, anyway, thank you for.
Thank you.
Putting up with my things, because I really, really am so thrilled that you're going to do it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else from the public?
Nathan Markey, Precinct 337, Holyoke Street. I'm just here to back up my boy Marvin. I've seen him at meetings all the time, and he's my council viewing buddy now. Um, and I applaud the council for, um, lowering the city, well, when it becomes lowered in the very soon to near future. Applaud them for, um, for, um, taking up this issue. In fact, Cottage Street, I don't even know why it's twenty-five miles an hour. I've never even been able to make twenty miles an hour of Cottage Street. Um, but I drive a tank too. Um, but, yeah, um, I wish we had cities designed about, around walking, but with the advent of the automobile, cities are no longer designed that way. In, in fact, they've been torn apart and redesigned because of vehicles, um, and stuff. But East Hampton could potentially be a very, very walkable downtown area, and, um, any creative solutions in the future, it's on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Yeah? And if you're online, you can raise your hand if you are interested in speaking, your digital hand.
Carl Proll, fifteen Torrey. I just want to, you know, acknowledge that this is a problem. Thank you very much for taking it on. I think twenty-five is a great start. But to echo Councilor Denham's, uh, words, like, this has to just be a start. And I don't know if it's a lack of roads, if we have too many people driving, if we need more mass transit options. So many parts of the city are unwalkable. I regularly drive down Glendale to Loudville, seeing kids trying to walk down to the bridge to fish there, and there's no place to walk, people ripping by. Uh, I, I'm really just curious why our community, why our neighborhoods don't have more sidewalks, why our streets aren't maybe a little narrower, why we're tearing up the trees by the roads to, you know, have a little shade while you're walking to the market? I think we really need to look into how to make our city more walkable as driving becomes more dangerous, more expensive, and just out of reach for a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, anybody online? Okay, uh, seeing none, I, I think I can, I can start. I can do the, the motions. Um, and so the first motion would be a very simple motion to have the city of East Hampton, uh, adopt MGL, um, Chapter Ninety, Section Seventeen C. I would state that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on adopting the citywide twenty-five mile an hour speed limit? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Okay, seeing none, motion passes. And now the second piece of that is just housekeeping, um, which, and that housekeeping is, is very simple. We just need to adopt these two, um, um, one is definitions, and this goes to traffic rules and order. So I would move that we adopt Article One and General Section One dash one definitions by adding the following two definitions: Business District, the downtown business, highway business, neighborhood business, industrial or mill industrial districts as defined by East Hampton zoning ordinance. Thickly settled, uh, areas in the city where homes are less than two hundred feet apart on an average for a quarter mile or more. Um, and in that motion, I would also like to, um, add, uh, the amending of Article Seven, Operation of Vehicles by adding a new Section One dash six-nine twenty-five mile per hour citywide speed limit. The city shall observe a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit in business districts in thickly settled areas in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter Ninety, Section Seventeen C. This section shall take effect six months after the date of approval, and that's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Motion's pass. Thank you, everybody, and I would, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, public hearing is closed, and at this point, what I'd like to do is I'd like to invite the mayor back up, and I'd like to reopen Mayor Communications, um, because I think the mayor's bringing us something. A gift.
You should have it in your email.
Yes.
And it should be on the website as well.
Yep.
Um, so I am presenting, um, my fiscal year twenty-six, uh, budget tonight. Um, and I have comments, so I don't forget to say anything. Um, so per East Hampton's Home Rule Charter, the mayor must propose an annual expense budget to the city council. Please accept this overview and the email budget book found on the website, with hard copies to be placed at the city clerk's office, the council on aging, the library, and the mayor's office as of tomorrow morning at about nine AM. Um, my budget guidance to the city departments had two very clear directives. Um, they received it in late January, and that was to reduce no wages or positions, and to add four percent to the expense side of their budget. So that, um, uh, top half is personnel expense, and then the bottom are operational expenses. These directives allow for an apples-to-apples comparison across departments. I then met with each department to review requested expenditures unique to their operations and considered their obligated, uh, payroll expenses. As a result, the department increases are equitable for operations, but are not equal in percentage. This proposed expense budget reflects the spending of general fund dollars from local receipts, excluding one-time grant funds revolving accounts or specific purpose funds that support a department's budget. As of December twenty-four, our retirement system fund balance was eighty-one million, six-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. This is a six-point-one-million-dollar increase from the prior le, uh, year, and we remain on track to be fully funded by twenty thirty-two. Our debt ratios are well within our policy, and our reserves are healthy. Our bond rating remains double-A plus. The fiscal reset initiated in twenty-twenty-one continues to produce results, positioning East Hampton to grow a resilient local economy, expand and diversify public services, and prevent a return to past structural deficits. The top-line goal remind, remains, maintain fiscal flexibility to create options in the face of the unknown. My fiscal year twenty-six budget assumptions follow past practices with some deviations based on local needs and current regional economic conditions. A reminder that, uh, the department expenditures, when you look at this budget, um, are as of January one of twenty twenty-five, so the budget book will not reflect what the departments have spent to date in your budget book, but updates will be available at the individual department hearings. We have benchmarked our fiscal year twenty-six expenditures to the Massachusetts Senate, a proposed budget that just came out, because it had a truer figure of what we could expect. Um, local aid, including Chapter Seventy and Chapter Ninety, right now, is projected to be lower than last year's actuals, but this is in flux because of Fair Share Amendment. Um, uh, negotiations going back and forth. Uh, special education, tuition, and transportation remain underfunded. There are a couple of legislative proposals that we'll fully fund, and our fingers are crossed. Um, the Mountain View School, short. The Mountain View School short-term debt will roll into a long-term bond in summer 2025. We had an 18% rise in our healthcare expenses and our insurance. Our OPEB, which is the post-employment benefits, our liability is growing as our workforce gets older, and we fund our OPEB account, it's a special set aside account, at a relatively conservative amount. It is a, the policy around OPEB is very fluid, as far as what a city should be putting towards it or not. We make a commitment to put at least some money towards it. It's usually about 10% of what we're, what we're putting into retirement. We do have reduced retirement contributions due to our demographics and the cost of living. Our rising energy delivery charges is flattening parts of our budget, and price volatility on goods and services driven by federal trade and tariff uncertainty. I think every year I've done a budget, I've wanted to take that bullet point out, price volatility, and there's unfortunately something always to put after it that is beyond normal Important to note that property values continue to grow, and we have new growth, but we expect that to slow in both housing and commercial sectors after fiscal year 26. These assumptions shape a budget built on informed benchmarks, updated financial policies that guide East Hampton's long-term stability. Resilient also means consistently funding pension and post-employment obligations, even as regulations and mandates increase, because keeping our promises to employees is both fiscally and ethically non-negotiable. This past fiscal year, grand focus areas include cybersecurity and public infrastructure, both capital intensive structure sectors that reduce long-term costs by avoiding breakdowns of outdated systems. Our shift to leasing city vehicles based on projected needs instead of market whims is another example of this strategic approach. Additionally, a new regional dispatch agreement supports critical upgrades. The $10 million permanent federal outfall authorization will save 30% on our integrated storm water management plan, and that authorization is still in place, still in place, we did not lose it. The water and technology departments also secure partial grants to upgrade our SCADA system, our water measuring system, and that will improve water usage tracking and also protect me against cyber threats. Traditionally, my expense budget is based on the governor's proposed budget, and that's where we started. This year, both the House and State and Senate budgets were passed more quickly, allowing me to get updated estimates using the Senate budget. As a result, my proposed fiscal year 2026 expense budget is $61,982,282.64. This reflects an 8.44 increase over fiscal year 25's approved spend budget of $57,155,667.14. While this is an expense budget, I provide a revenue summary. You will see a version of that revenue summary in the budget book as well. The last city revenue category includes various special funds available for appropriation from prior years. Other sources of available funds in fiscal year 26 include special revenue offsets within departmental budgets, such as $17,000 from the sale of cemetery lots, the cemetery department, $9,000 from parking ticket revenues that are used for ADA improvements, as well as, what do you know, traffic, traffic, car?
Well, I'm a traffic officer.
Traffic officer, thank you. The city worked with the Department of Local Services, which is a division of the Department of Revenue from Massachusetts, to update our financial policies. This is very exciting for me. We use both the DLS dashboards, which you're used to seeing in your budget book, that shows what we have done, what we are doing in key financial indicators. It is an amazing tool for past performance and how we predict the future. Key indicators include everything from debt levy, from levy limit to debt to free cash. These policies, based on those past performances in DLS data, basically are a playbook for what prudent fiscal management looks like in East Hampton. From this project, a major policy update is our financial reserve strategy, which finally accomplishes the longstanding goal of right-serving, right sizing our reserve levels. I'm disappointed Counselor Pec is not here, because he and I worked very hard on how to do this. What this means, right sizing reserve levels, is it allows greater latitude in general fund spending to address new growth and evolving service demand as we expect them to grow, you know, i.e. growth, need in parking recreation services, is a good example, public health, and not relying or crossing our fingers that we will have enough in reserves or in a high stabilization account. So as a result, we are shifting, for fiscal year 26, we are shifting $4 million from our general stabilization fund into the general fund while remaining in line with our new policy targets. That sounds a little dramatic, but basically what we're doing is that we have oversaved very purposely for a number of years to get to the point where we could basically right-size our budget and, and stop saving in the in case and start forecasting and being a little more sure of what our general fund would look like. In other communities, this plays out with a last-minute deficit or the inability to add or subtract services from one budget to another. We will still have ample stabilization funds across all of our stabilization funds, and you'll see that in the budget book. The percent or targets of what we want in each one of those stabilization funds are set with guidance from the Department of Revenue and the Department of Local Services. We also have additional revenue sources this year, as we have done in the past, with $100,000 from the tax rate stabilization fund, as well as our excess overlay account, $400,000. Excess overlay account is something that the Board of Assessors oversees. It tracks, we put aside money every year in case we have to give money back to a taxpayer from a lawsuit because we did not assess their property. The recommended amount in that account is about $200,000. We have $600,000, so we're going to take $400,000 and bring it back into the budget. As well, we will reserve another $4,000 in the coming budget you'll be looking at, because we know we have increased debatements through the HEROES Act, as well as building projects that have not happened, didn't come to conclusion, they might come back and ask for refund because they're not doing the project. Free cash will continue to replenish our stabilization accounts to policy-recommended levels based on annual December evaluations conducted by the city's internal fiscal team and reviewed in consultation with the city's fiscal advisors. This budget is no different from prior years in one key word. It reflects, it reflects the values of East Hampton, driven by engaged residents, dedicated municipal staff, thoughtful public service, pointed divisions, sorry, my last budget. I'm so very emotional. Yeah, like, yes, it's done, but also it's been a year. So in summary, I look forward to the committee hearings by each department, the changes in fiscal policies, which are a part of the budget book. I know you will, but I will encourage you to take a really strong look at them because they really putting guidelines that walks us through the next 10 years. And, and we're trying to avoid now having all that extra cash in our stabilization. It's nice to have interest, but we need to spend it in the budget, and we need to do it in a plan for life. So, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And I would entertain a motion to move the mayor's budget to finance.
So, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and I think that puts us, well, actually, mayor, would you like to do the police chief? Or do, are we doing that tonight, or are we just sending that? Since you're here.
Yeah, yeah, yes, thank you. So putting forward, after a really rigorous process, hats off to our HR Director, Emily Russo, for putting together a truly third-party assessment center and evaluation process for our police chief candidates. We, I was presented with two finalists, one external, one internal. They were asked the same questions. There were a lot of very objective data, assessment questions, scenarios, and then I was presented a rubric of how everyone scored, and then had individual interviews. I will say that there was some back and forth in the beginning of the process about not just going with an internal candidate or chain of command. I felt that the full external search was really important. I wanted anybody and everybody who was applying to really want it, and not assume they were going to get it, or they had to take it, and it played out very well. So last week, we made an offer contingent on confirmation, as well as contract negotiations, to Chad Alexander, who accepted the offer, and has been actually already a working partner with Deputy Chief Skribner on command staff. I, you know, he's probably very familiar to you all, and I will say about Mr. Alexander's presentation and questions, I was surprised that with the research and depth of his questions, his answers to the assessment center were really well thought out, but also I would expect as an internal candidate them to be very focused on the operations here in East Hampton, and they were really based on industry standards. So he has a lot of community support. We did provide some of that community support, letters that people had chimed in on with, and I think you, you know, would note that they come from a wide range of members of our community across all of the precincts. So I very proudly would like to put his name forward to be considered by this body for our next police chief.
Thank you very much, mayor. I would love to entertain a motion to move this mayoral appointment for the chief of police.
So move.
To appointments, and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any abstentions or noes? Motion passes. Okay, so that brings us back to committee reports, and I believe we left off with finance, and so I believe we're at public safety. Counselor Terrell?
Public safety, we had a meeting yesterday, which largely involved the discussion of the proposed 25 mile an hour speed limit. We also still are dealing with pedestrian safety aims, like President Derby alluded to. Every meeting, we hear a different scenario of something that's happened to a resident in town that was related to pedestrian safety. So it was nice to see that speed limit get passed this evening. We do not have a date set for our next meeting. That concludes.
Thank you very much, and that brings us to appointments. Counselor Smith?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We have, we have not met since our last city council meeting, so I have three items for our next meeting, two of them which I will have to move forward tonight. Well, actually, we just did one, so I have one additional to move forward tonight, which is Samantha Mater is back for the Board of Health for a term expiration of 12/31/25.
Okay, we have a motion to, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes.
Okay, and our other, other two appointees that we'll be looking at will be Chad Alexander for the police chief position, and also the Assistant City Clerk appointment. The one thing I wanted to make sure that we note is that this might need a large room, and because of that, both with having the police chief appointment and having the finance budget meetings going on in the same week, decided that I'd need to just check in with Mary Ann to make sure that we have a day that has a room that's large enough with also having a camera in it. So be doing that, and then to be determined.
Great, thank you, Counselor Smith. And ordinance, Counselor Denham?
Thank you, Mr. President. We last met on April 28 to discuss the zoning ordinance recommendations brought to us by the Affordable Fair Housing Partnership, continued to move through the recommendations, the committee asked questions, et cetera. Our next meeting will be June 10 at 5:00 p.m. in Conference Room 1, and at that meeting, we're going to continue that conversation regarding the zoning ordinance recommendations, and we're going to have the Aqua Fur Protection Committee Chair there to answer any questions or to ask us any questions that he, concerns that he may have regarding the recommendations. So he will be there at that particular meeting. We are waiting for input from the city solicitor regarding the short-term rental ordinance, and so once we have that, we'll be able to move forward with that discussion. The other items, we haven't gotten to because we've been busy with these other things, but they are at the forefront, and we will be, moving forward those once we get some farther along with some of these other items. I do, in the form of a motion, want to extend the date for the request for temporary moratorium on use of sewage slash fertilizer in East Hampton by 90 days.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to extend the sewer sludge fertilizer in East Hampton 90 days. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes.
Great. Again, so the next meeting will be June 10, 5:00 p.m., Conference Room 1, and we will discuss the zoning ordinance recommendations. And with that, that's everything that the committee has to offer this evening.
And, all right, thank you, Counselor Denham. And property, and why am I blanking on this? Counselor Coniff, because we changed it recently, I knew there was somebody.
I got the short straw on this.
Thank you, Counselor Coniff.
So we have had two meetings, largely, one was a public speak, essentially, and then the second one was where we kind of, I was tasked with kind of putting something together that we could react to, which I did. And so we kind of got to a place where, because of this, I think, made it to these councils' agenda in December, then we had some turnover, then we had to reorg. We got to a place where we were like, you know, we're coming up on zero hour to have this flag or not have this flag, and to do an ordinance. And so in talking with the mayor and in the city attorney, an agreement has been reached where a couple of things are going to happen in the short run for this year. One, the Pond Committee is going to take over kind of the installation of a flag. The mayor has agreed, we met Monday night with the Pond Committee, and the mayor was there, and she has requested that for 2025, if, if the flag is to go up, there are two things that need to be met by the Pond Committee, which is ensure that they have liability coverage for the side of the flag that is on private property, and that that private property owner have liability coverage and proof of that they can present to the city, and second, that there will be a licensing requirement wherein, in order to use public property, and it's no different than cultural chaos, I think, and some other things, where you're going to use public property, you have to kind of get a license. And so the mayor provided all of that paperwork in terms of what they need to fill out. They seemed very amenable to doing that, but at this point, we're not in an ordinance phase, there's nothing for this council to approve or disapprove. It's kind of between the Pond Committee now and the mayor for this year only. Like her, I don't even know if you want to call it an executive order, is going to end in 2025, and then there will still, by this committee, the property committee, need to create an ordinance for the go-forward of flags, banners throughout the city, particularly the pond, but also there are some other places we need to codify some things. So that will be ongoing, but this timeline is kind of now in the hands of the mayor and the Pond Committee, and we can now put more thought into something going forward.
Thank you. I appreciate the hard work the committee put into that. I know there was some, some tense moments in some of the, so, and it was not something that you all created, so, and nice job handling that, so, appreciate that. And thank you for the report. And Rules and Government Relations, Counselor Kuzinski?
We'd like to report that we're going to have a meeting on Thursday, next Thursday, May 15, at 5:00. May 15 at 5:00 p.m. of the Rules Committee.
Great.
That concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. And I believe we took care of all of our new business, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No discussion on that one. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.